I would like to welcome everyone to the Carlisle Local School Board Meeting on Monday, February 26, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Bassler, will you call the board?
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Dunkman?
Here.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
And Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge? At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Truitt to lead us in the pledge, please. Mrs. Truitt, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Oh, absolutely. I pledge...
Pledgees to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to student and program recognition. Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. Appreciate it. And I've got a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I'm going to start off with the recognitions through Grigsby Intermediate, and with that, I'll introduce Mr. Easton.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking the school board, Mr. Hook, and Mr. Bassler for inviting us to attend this evening. I'm going to start recognizing the two adults that planned out and carried this event for us. I'd like to recognize Nikki Rafflick, our art teacher, for donating countless hours to this worthy cause, and Courtney Steckel, Director of Development at the Humane Society of Greater Dayton, who would like to share a few words about the organization. Nikki and Courtney, could you please come down?
Congratulations. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the board and the staff, and of course, all of the animals at the Humane Society of Greater Dayton, we wanted to thank each of you, Mrs. Rafflick and all of the students, for all of your countless hours that you spent fundraising for us. And a little bit about our organization, we are a no-kill organization, and we help all types of animals, so cats, dogs, rabbits, farm animals, horses, snakes, you name it. We've probably rescued one or two. So, we save over, again, 1,500 animals a year, and we investigate hundreds of cruelty-neglect cases. So, this is exactly what your money is going towards, and we can save many more animals thanks to all of the hard work, and we appreciate all of it. So, thank you to each of you.
Thank you. If you guys would like to have a seat or anything...
Very quickly, I'm going to tell you a little bit more about what the students did during this fundraiser, then I'm going to call them down. Ms. Steckel and Ms. Rafflick will join them for some pictures. To participate in this event, students had to maintain good standing in their classes. They met every Friday during recess and lunch from December through February. They had certain tasks to complete and prepare for the sale. These tasks include a lot of things that you would be expecting in the business world. They had to market. They created flyers and signs that they advertised the sales throughout the building. They organized, made sales associate badges, and set up the crayon store production. They peeled and broke, literally, I think, hundreds and hundreds of crayons to melt into shapes. And of course, finally, sales. They sold crayon shapes during recess to all grades, January 5th through February 2nd. So, at this time, would these students please come forward, and then you can come on up and stand in front of our board for some pictures. Justine Bolden. Logan Brunz.
Congratulations. Do you guys would like to join up there? Congratulations.
Ross Campbell. Lorelei Choate.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Emma Lufflin.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Brianna Smith.
Congratulations. Thank you. That's all right. Congratulations. Thank you.
Through hard work and ingenuity, this group raised a total of $277 for the Humane Society of Greater Dayton. Please join me in giving this group a much-deserved round of applause.
Thank you, guys. You may be seated.
Mr. Hook, Mr. Bassler, aboard. Thank you for having us this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Easton. Appreciate it. Great job, kid. Super. Also, I want to recognize special education students and special kids here, as well as talk a little bit about the program, what we're going on. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Special Education, Susan Klein.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to recognize some students who've been doing some great things for our department. I'd like to first express appreciation for Tyler Tinscher and Yvonne Smith. They have initiated a new partnership this year with the Ally Strong Foundation Store to benefit their upper-class Resource Room students. A job coach position is funded by a grant from the Warren County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and Yvonne Smith has stepped into that role and supports our students as they work in service of our community and to gain job skills. The students intern at the store two mornings a week, where they sort donations, organize them onto shelves, practice teamwork, follow supervisor directions, and more. The students are also learning how to complete time cards and calculate hours worked. We're very grateful to Christina Brown for partnering with us, and to Mr. Tinscher and Mrs. Smith for creating this new opportunity for our students. And we'd like to recognize three students who are participating in this new initiative. So, students, would you come forward when I call your names? And I would love to have Mrs. Smith and Mr. Tinscher come down to award them their certificates. First is Ricky Shepherd. Ricky, thanks for all the work you're doing at Ally Strong. I want to also recognize Ethan Fernier. He is not here tonight, but he's also participating in the program. And Kenzie Webster, please come down, Kenzie. Thank you for your work with the foundation. And if you guys want to get over there, why don't you guys get with him and take a picture Thank you so much for your work. Next, at Grigsby Intermediate School, Janice Truitt and Alex Hemmelgarn are champions for their students, and I'd like them to come down. We have three students at Grigsby who have worked especially hard this year to become outstanding in mathematics. They have mastered all of their math facts with 100% accuracy, and that's quite an accomplishment. So, students, when I call your name, if you would come down and accept your certificate from your teachers, and then have a step over here so we can get pictures. Our first student is Evan Clark. Good job, buddy.
Good job.
Good job, Evan.
Good job. Great job. Congratulations, Evan.
Good job, Evan, right there. Our next student is Devon Greenfield. Devon, come on down.
Good job, Devon. Yeah.
Great job. Great job. Congratulations, Evan.
And our last student is Austin Hicks. Austin, come on down. Some of us remember memorizing our math facts, and it's not that easy, so good job. Good job. Hey, you did a great job coaching them. And if you guys want to have a step up there, we'll get a picture.
Congratulations, Austin.
Oh, Sean's got it.
You want... You're going to take it from behind?
No.
That's a great picture.
Congratulations to our math scholars at Grigsby. And lastly, but not least, I would like to recognize Leah Cole and Amanda Warren, who support some of our youngest learners and help them experience success each day. Leah is coming down to help me congratulate this student. Mrs. Warren and Mrs. Cole are more than teachers. They help students learn, they cheer them on when learning is hard, and they inspire their students to be their very best selves. This student has stood out to them as somebody who is exemplifying the qualities of kindness, helpfulness, and being an outstanding school citizen. Nate McIntosh, will you come forward and be recognized?
Thanks, Mike. Stay right up there. Shake your hands if you'd like.
Nate, without any prodding or urging from his teachers, goes out of his way every day to be a good friend to his classmates and to help his teachers. We're very proud of him.
You guys go up there and get your picture taken, too. Turn that award around.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to highlight just a few of our outstanding students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Truitt. And to all of you that came to enjoy this, this is the fun... This is the best part of a board meeting. Sorry, I like everything else, but getting to see what we do in schools and the kids, it really makes it all worthwhile. Thank you for coming. If you wish to stay, you're more than welcome, but if not, feel free to enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
At this time, this is our visitor's comments. If anybody wants to say anything, you may come to the podium and speak. Seeing none, we will move on to the Treasurers' Report. Mr. Bassler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. First thing I have is a non-action item. As just a reminder of our meeting, that we all will be attending the OSBA Spring Regional Conference, which is Tuesday, March 13th. Make sure, if you haven't done so already, you get that on your calendar. We'll be at the Warren County Career Center, 5:15. I think the actual begins at 5:30, but check-in begins at 5:15. So, just a reminder, make sure you have that on your calendar for March 13th. Okay, with that, I'll move on to my action items. Not a whole lot this month, but we'll get them started. First, we need to approve the minutes from the last regularly-scheduled board meeting, which was January 22nd.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Next, financial report, which is part of your packet. Hopefully, had a chance to look it over. Again, nothing to report, really. Regular bills, regular revenues. I wish I had some exciting stuff to tell you, but I'm also glad that I don't have any exciting stuff to tell you. So, I'll need an approval for the financial report.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McIntosh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
And finally, I need an approval for the donation listed by one of our employees who will be leaving the district after the meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That is my report for the month.
Thank you very much. We will move to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Hook?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Lainhart, members of the board. Non-action items, I've got several that I need to go through. It's been a very hectic since last time we met. First of all, construction update. We are moving at, from a planning perspective, and Mr. Jewell can attest to it, these are brutal meetings that are going four hours, and I appreciate them. It's like bloodletting. It's tough, man. But it's good. Things are moving really quickly. We are on target. Nothing at this point is going to keep us from our 2020 opening, and those are... So, it's on task. And the other piece with that is, and I keep trying to let people know, that even though you don't see groundbreaking, the majority of the work comes in this year, right now, in the planning and... Once you see it breaking ground, the plans are done. They're there, then it's just executing. So, we're rolling. They've taken the educational visioning component. They've started talking to individual groups and teachers. We'll have a meeting, an open meeting to the community sometime in March that hasn't... Probably won't know for a couple of weeks yet. It'll probably be towards the end of March, and probably a second forum for people to come in and see where they're at and how that's all coming together, probably towards the end of April. So, there's a couple of those that are on the horizon. Plus, there are a handful of more meetings in terms of, not just that, but we still have to meet with athletics and different segments, the science groups, because there's some uniquenesses in the rooms. So, a lot of that stuff is still to take place, but we are on schedule at this point, and so far, we are under budget, which is a great thing, which makes me happy, and makes him really happy, and so it's all good. So, we just keep plugging along. We'll keep you posted. Again, I remind people that you can see the updates I keep on the website. I update it as much as we can. Once we actually break ground, then we'll start throwing videos and pictures in, and you'll be able to see it. It'll be a little more exciting than what we're doing right now, so as we get it, we'll share it. So, just wanted you to be aware of that. I also want to mention, just again, one more time, we do have a renewal that'll be on the May 8th ballot. Again, just to remind everyone that this will not increase our taxes, but it's critical for the financial stability of the district. This was passed five years ago, and every five years, we'll go with a renewal. We promised we'd go five years with it before asking for any kind of additional funds. We're going to make it go another five. So, you're getting a lot of bang for the buck, and that's important for all of us. So, that'll be on... So, again, a reminder, it's a renewal, so it's money that's already budgeted, it's already there. So, I did get a thumbs up from... She got out of here too fast. Courtney and the crew that ran the bond, kind of helped with... Kind of ran the whole thing there, really. They're going to do this as well. So, you'll get more information, and you'll start seeing that as we get a little bit closer. Okay? So, we're excited about that. You know, our hearts are just... It's hard to watch TV sometimes anymore. I'm getting to the point where I don't know if I want to watch it. We're all... If you're in schools, if you have a heart, anything, the tragedies at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, it's our worst nightmare, there's no doubt. And as a superintendent, you know, assistant superintendent, a high school principal, you know, I deal with... There's great stuff the majority of the time, but you know, there's always ugly stuff you deal with. And you know what? I still sleep really good at night. This is the only thing that keeps me awake, is our students and their safety. And I just want to make sure that people understand that our school district takes it very, very seriously. We all do. We train for it. We teach our kids. We train our staff. We have pieces in place. There's a reason we don't publicize everything, and I'm not going to. There are parts that I don't want people to know how we're going to respond. God forbid we have to in those instances. But suffice it to say, it's nothing that we don't continually evaluate and look at and say, are we doing what we can at this point in time? Our new buildings will have other features built into it that, again, I'm not really there to the point where I can talk a lot about it. You've just got to realize that prior to 1999, when the tragedy in Columbine took place, schools were designed to be open, welcoming, community centers. Nobody dealt with this. So, if you look, it's really buildings that have been built, really, since the mid-2000s and beyond, that actually have security, things kind of built into them. It helps. It creates a better and a safer environment. Do I think it's perfect? I don't know if there is a perfect, but we guarantee that this building will be even better. But it doesn't mean that for the next two years, we're not going to continue to strive to make this the most safe. Our kids need to be able to come to school and feel safe. A week ago, shortly after the situation in Florida, I met in this room with some of our leaders in the school, the students. We met for about a half hour. What all of the superintendents in Warren County, and you know, you can take a moment and really realize that Warren County is so far ahead of the curve in Ohio. You know, we are putting on a student-only meeting with Senator Wilson, State Representative Lips, all the superintendents, all the high school principals. We've also got... The governor is sending his Director of Safety and Security to that meeting, and every police chief in Warren County will be there. And the purpose of this is that we want to have students have a voice. We value what our kids think. And really, it's about how do you feel about safety in schools? What ideas do you have to address it? And really, this is about them. So, each school, we're going to bring six leaders of the school. And we've got, like I said, their student council, you know, each one will have six of those kids. And we'll be meeting at the Warren County ESC. I'll be taking them over on the 9th, March 9th. So, it'll be... I'm really excited to hear them. I don't necessarily like what we're talking about, but it's exciting. I had a great discussion with the 12, 13, 14 kids that came in here, and just what's on their mind. You know, there's some things that I can fix now, and we will, things that were on their mind. There's some things we might be able to do at state level. There's some things that we might be able to do at the federal level. We did also extend an invitation to Steve Shabbitt, our federal congressman in Washington. I haven't heard back whether he's going to be there or not, you know? Portman, who knows? I don't know that yet. This is evolving very quickly. But I do want you to know how fast Senator Wilson and Representative Lips that our state voice in Columbus responded to be there. That says something. There's a lot of places you can't get that done, but in Warren County, we have a very strong voice, and so it's really good to have that. Certainly, I'll report on that as that progresses. By the next time, you'll hear more about it, I'm sure. Probably even be... I'm sure it'll be on the news, so... So, that's kind of my non-action items. Like I said, a lot of stuff going on right now, and with that, I'm going to move into my action items. I don't have really a whole lot of personnel stuff. One of the things I have is, and you'll probably get these all along here this next few months, this is the resolution to accept the architectural contract. It was part of the packet. It has been reviewed in detail by the Ohio Facilities Commission and approved. They got their stamp. We gave it to our attorneys, our school attorneys. They've reviewed it and said, yep, it's good to go. So, with that, we have... Need acceptance of that resolution.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Which one? Mr. Jewell?
Neither of me or him.
And Mr. Moore. All right. There's no questions. You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes. Thank you much and care.
Item 1B will be an approval for the gifted process. This is just something that's required. It's more about the process that we do for identification of gifted in our plan that keeps us up to speed. It's not a policy, but it's more about practice, and we have to have that approved. They like to see that. They feel better in Columbus if we do that. That's what that one is. Item C was the approval to join the Regional Business Advisory Council. I may have said that the last time, but one of the items that was passed by our General Assembly was that each school district had to have a Business Advisory Council.
Do we have any old business? All right, any new business? All right, seeing none, I need a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Thank you much, and carry.
And that concludes my session. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to the Board of Education. Do we have a legislative report?
Nothing of substance to report, then.
All right. All right, the CTC met on February the 13th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, and it was our regular session. Do we have any old business? All right, any new business? All right, seeing none, I need a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you much, and carry.
And that concludes my session. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to the Board of Education. Do we have a legislative report?
Nothing of substance to report, then.
All right. All right, the CTC met on February the 13th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, and it was our regular session. Do we have any old business? All right, any new business? All right, seeing none, I need a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh. You may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Time is 6:33.